Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Please note that this meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment in compliance with state law, Public Act 21-1. As such, this meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, please remember to mute your microphone unless you are speaking. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title at the outset of each occasion that such person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of this body or participating remotely shall be taken by poll vote unless the vote is unanimous. The chat feature will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. We'll call. I see Mr. Reed is here electronically. Is Jessica Katuska here remotely?
I think she said she'd call in, but I don't know.
DeeDee, did you hear anything?
I've not heard from her.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Katuska is not here right now. Mr. Rooney? Hearing none, Mr. Rooney is out. Seven members of council are present. Mr. First Selectman, your budget presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's get a second here to get the... Hold up here and... Coffee's taking their way down. If anyone would like one, feel free to just grab one. So, thanks, everyone. My pleasure to present my proposed budget for 2223 fiscal year. As always, I think we skipped a slide here. As always, my guiding principles remain to the overarching goal of controlling taxes and a conservative approach to spending, always wanting to continue to improve our roads and infrastructure, support a robust education system, deliver our effective municipal services, and maintain a very strong financial health that we have here in town. The budget document itself, the format is unchanged from prior years. It's standardized across departments with metrics, financials, expenditures, revenues for those departments that generate revenue, and details supporting the bill for each one. So with that, let's get into some of the specifics. So we've had an extremely good year as relates to grant list growth. So the projected 21 grand list, which was just signed by our assessor on January 31st, shows a net change in the grand list of over $73 million, which is a number we haven't seen in many, many years. You'll see that the residential and commercial growth of $18 and $15 million respectively, that alone is sizable as compared to prior years. The commercial category includes commercial, industrial, public utilities, and personal property as well. Our vacant land, the impact has gone down, which is, which is, I view, is a good thing. That means we're developing vacant land where appropriate. I'll skip down briefly to exemptions. The exemptions have gone down, which is a positive impact because that is adding, that's, you know, removing more of a negative from the grand list total. And the big number, almost $49 million, is the change in motor vehicle grand list. That is being driven by a statewide 25% increase in the value of used vehicles because of where the market is currently. As I said in my budget discussion in the book, you know, we're not sure how that, you know, how that'll take to normalize, but we have to incorporate the grand list, you know, we have to by law incorporate it into the... Getting phone call there, Jason. I don't know how that happened. Someone's got the wrong extension. We incorporate it into the grand list and we'll continue to work through that as we move forward. So that has a very positive impact to us this year. The key drivers... I'll pause.
Oh, automobile service contract.
Is your warranty about to expire?
I get that.
Yeah, right. The key municipal expenditure drivers this year, a lot of, it's the usual, the usual categories, wages and salaries, about $384,000 affecting all departments. Most of the union increases are in the departmental budgets. There's one union, and as always, the non-union increases are in the wage adjustment line and HR. There are two positions that are proposed going to, from part-time to full-time, which we'll talk about. That's all incorporated there. In the HR department, insurance, as always, a driver this year, estimating $181,000. It is an estimate. We've anticipated in the budget an 8% increase in our premiums. That is the guidance that we're receiving consistently from not just our consultant, but also in consultation with the Board of Ed, the same number that their advisor gave them. We're hoping we'll do better, but that is the number that we have in at this moment. It is partially offset by a decrease in our other policies, our liability auto and property claims policy, and our workers' comp have actually gone down. So that number would be a little bit larger if we did not have that. We will expect to get final premium rates in April as we always do. Typically, it's the Board of Finance that has to make any final adjustments to this number. The police pension, which is the SEAMERS program, is in the fourth year of a phase-in of an increase to the employer contribution rate. That's set by the State Retirement Commission. That's a almost $60,000 increase there. Fuel is a huge driver this year. Again, this is all back, coming down to our, the current economy. Gasoline is going to be up 42% from our current budget, diesel 36, and heating oil also 36. That's about $121,000 of impact across all the departments. We have roads and other capital projects in multiple departments, which is going to be up almost $450,000. I'm going to talk about that in one minute in the following slide. But that is to fund more projects through the operating budget in fiscal year 23. And then last but not least, operating expenses. The cost of routine vendor goods and services really being driven by the supply chain challenges and vendor labor cost increases is contributing to almost $150,000 increase across the board when you look at all the departments. So with all those pressures at us, we have a, this proposes a net increase in the operating expenditures on the municipal side of just over 3%, 3.09%. So I talked a little bit about capital. In this budget, I'm looking to fund more capital projects without bonding. So we have over $1.3 million in various efforts that are going to be funded through the operating budget. And that's an increase, as I said earlier, about just almost $450,000. So we've got the ability in this budget to do that, rely less on bonding, and get some of these projects completed. It's a, it's a collection of smaller projects for the town and the Board of Ed for technology. There's a repainting of the senior center, the exterior, which is long overdue, a portion of our police vehicles, parks and rec equipment, and the second-year payments for the town hall HVAC and lighting upgrades, which you're well aware of because we dealt with that in the last budget season, and we said we can find a way to do that here. Another thing that is, the, in this budget, is something different. I want to, I want to start a process of kind of looking how we approach some of our project scope and design efforts. So this budget incorporates a $250,000 appropriation into a new reserve that I'm calling the Project Scope and Design Development Reserve. The reason behind this is to allow us to move more aggressively on public works projects that require scope and design so we can understand what, what it really is, how much it's going to cost. We have the ability in our purchasing policy to use a, an effort that I worked on with MetroCog to have a pre-qualified list of various professional services that we can kind of have on-call, and they've gone through a competitive RFQ process to get on that list. I want to be able to fund preliminary design efforts in advance so that when we talk about capital projects in our budgets, they're a little bit better than kind of a swag. We actually have some better numbers to those things. And last but not least, I want to have more projects closer to shovel-ready. And the reason being is every grant program we've seen, even the steep program, as you were aware of last year, and as we look at some of the projects that may possibly get funded through the federal infrastructure bill, it will behoove us to have more projects further along in the design process. So this is a way to get some of that work going and get us towards a, be better positioned to get more capital projects moving faster. There are some departmental changes in this budget. Some of them are familiar to you. In the inland wetlands, as you know from a prior town council resolution, the position that was currently in the inland wetlands department was consolidated with the zoning enforcement officer into a zoning and wetlands enforcement position. So we've migrated all of that budget into the planning and zoning department. The zoning enforcement line items historically were budgeted as a separate department in the, within the planning and zoning discussion. They are certainly not a separate department within planning and zoning, so as a pure kind of accounting consolidation process, we've rolled that into the planning and zoning budget as well. The engineering department will be incorporated into the Department of Public Works, and I'll be discussing that in the future with you, I'm sure. And the engineering technician position that we have currently open will remain vacant. And in lieu of some of that, we will be relying on a little bit of increased vendor support in that area. On the other side of the equation, there's two positions that I'm proposing going from part-time to full-time. One is a part-time position in my office. The office has absorbed tremendous amount of support for meetings. There's a lot of them, but what comes to my most are these meetings. And there are seven town council committees that are being supported from agendas, minutes, coordination, et cetera. There's a lot of increased administrative support, various support for other departments as well. It's, it's, it's not any one thing. It could range from administration of the online appointment system to, you know, training on Zoom, you know, support for various things. It's just increased. Last but not least, we also have increased support. We've had increase in constituent services and a little bit more recently, a more increase in FOI requests, particularly from a lot of, I would say, commercial enterprises that are kind of trying to get their work done and using the FOI statute to have, to have us do research for them, but we have to follow the law and do it. The second item is a health inspector position. There's a per diem position currently in the, in the current budget. I'm proposing that go to full-time simply because the administrative demands of the director, separate from the pandemic, and I would say will continue after the pandemic, are at the point where it really requires them to be more focused on administrative matters and therefore requiring further shift of inspections to staff. You recall when we first created this department, that position, it was anticipated we'd be able to spend about half the time doing inspections, the other half as administrator. That did work for quite some time, but the state health department has added significant responsibilities, administrative responsibilities to local health departments, and we're not alone in feeling a lot of that. So it really does require more administrative and department head focus on those matters versus, versus being out in the field. So that said, here are the numbers real quick, just so everyone's aware. This is all being done, I would say, better than budget neutral. It's actually at some budgetary savings, but those are kind of the ins and outs. When you look at the positions, it's a net, it's a net reduction of half an FTE and the net impact, including, you know, all the, all the salary wages and FICA, et cetera. There is one addition you will see there in technology, which is discussed elsewhere in the budget. You'll see an increase of $25,000 in the IT budget under a first selectman's adjustment. That is specifically to increase the MetroCog support of GIS, and that is specifically to address some of the increased support that we think we'll need with the, leaving the engineering technician position vacant because that was some of the, some of the work that was done there. I also feel like with the opportunity, with the other quarter million dollars that we're putting in to be able to get some of these projects going faster, that we'll have an increased need to, to kind of look outside for some of that support regardless. Something that we do already, again, it's just to be an increase of what we do, of what we do already. So that's that. The capital budget, I think these slides got out of order. This was just a wrap-up of our capital budget, about $4 million in projects that were preliminary identified for bonding and a significant increase in our capital reserve and operating budget. And we're going to continue to look for alternative funding sources, including grants have been identified already in this budget as we always do. As always, funding for roads, again, a solid $2 million towards road efforts, and there is a proposed $1 million in bonding. In this budget, I am shifting more of the funding into the operating budget and away from the Town Aid Road Grant. So that $400,000 is the portion of the Town Aid Road Grant that's specifically towards paving. There are other things that Town Aid Road Grant supports not included in the 400, but I am increasing the operating expense up to $600,000 in this budget. Again, keeping a steady amount, but looking to shift a little bit more into OpEx. Unassigned fund balance, something that I know is always of concern and interest to everyone. So in this budget, there is very little, under, I believe it's around $98,000 from, am I right? Number in my head?
Forty-eight-five.
I'm sorry, forty-eight-five. I was thinking of a different number. Yes, forty-eight-five. There's, in the, in the prior fiscal year, we appropriated some funds to deal with a settlement with the city of Richport, specifically to the Board of Education, and consistent with what the Board of Finance wanted to do last year, and paid that out of fund balance because it related to prior fiscal years. I left that, that payment in as being, as coming out of fund balance, but that is the only fund balance appropriation that I've included. So what you'll see, I, this slide, I know you've seen it before. I'm doing it a little bit different this year. I'm depicting the range of the Board of Finance policy. So the two green lines are the minimum, maximum range as currently set by the Board of Finance policy, with the target being the blue line. That's a, a moving range, if you will, because it is a percentage of our total expenditures. So that, as our expenditures go up, those, that range goes up as well. You will see that we've continued to improve. You'll see in, in fiscal year 1920, we kind of went out of the range. We were, we were firmly in the range. That was the year that, you'll remember in 2021, we elected, or I should say, in Board of Finance's final, final budget, we elected to appropriate $8 million to, as a kind of backstop or insurance against what we, the unknown of the pandemic. So those funds that got appropriated actually hit the end of fiscal year 20 because they were appropriated before the end of the fiscal year on 20. So that's why that final number goes down to 8%. In the following fiscal year, we also appropriated a fund balance, but not as much, and we did not use any of that 8 million. So we still ended up with an appropriation that brought us, we're back in the range, but only brought us up to 11, didn't bring us all the way back up. The projection for the end of the current fiscal year, because I'm not, again, this budget is not anticipating any fund balance appropriation other than that small amount I discussed earlier, that coupled with not anticipating to need any of the 3 million, or very little of the 3 million due to the ARPA funds, would put the end of the current fiscal year actually slightly above the Board of Finance's range at about 70.5%. And that, you know, would be pretty consistent in the end of the, you know, projected 2023 year as well, all things being equal. So the point is, we are still going to have a very, very healthy fund balance at the end of this fiscal year and projected at the end of next fiscal year. So what actions have we taken to reduce property tax impact? Our potential tax increase was over, would have been over 10% if a lot of things didn't happen. One is the Board of Education, prior to submitting their budget to me, reduced the superintendent's proposed budget by almost $400,000, going from about a 5.4% increase to a 4.7%, 4.8% increase. And then in my budget, I reduced initial submissions, which were about 1.9 million, or a 6% increase in expenditures down to 3%. So that was, that was a impact to reducing the projected tax levy required. This was certainly further lowered by the significant grant list growth that I said earlier, as well as incorporating the use of American Rescue Plan revenue replacement funds. As I said earlier, you know, we cannot use those funds for direct tax cuts, if you will. Again, one of the things we are able to do is utilize it for revenue replacement, and we're allowed, allowed to program those funds for future routine government services and operational costs. So by doing that and then using more operating budget to do some projects, as I said earlier, more capital projects, is a way to have kind of greater flexibility on getting some of the things done that we want to done and allowing the taxpayers to receive the benefit of these federal grant dollars. This brings the projected tax increase of the proposed budget down to 1.84%. Pitch over a five-year average is still, yes, it's up, but it is up less than a percent per year on average. Obviously, as always, there's further refinement in this process. As I mentioned earlier, medical insurance premium rates, we expect in April. As always, the Board of Assessment appeals have to be filed by February 20th, and that gives us a better sense of what we need in contingency in the mill rate calculation relative to the grand list. Water distribution services, at the time my budget was issued, we did not have from Aquarian. We do have that now, so we will be able to provide some refinement to Town Council for consideration. It will not be a significant change, and we believe it's been covered in the contingency line, so we'll have a discussion on that. There are certain services, I said, are in the process of being bid out because of the changes we've seen in certain circumstances. We are looking to bid things out, so we, as we get new information, we will certainly share that and allow them to be incorporated by either council or Board of Finance. And then last but certainly not least is, I'm sure you're all aware that the governor has proposed a cap on the motor vehicle rate to 29. This budget would have our mill rate at 37, just over 37, 37.03. So that would, as you, as you, those of you who remember when there was a prior motor vehicle cap that we submitted to, it creates a very difficult mill rate calculation because you have to do them separately. Currently, because it is not law yet, the General Assembly has not taken any action on that. I've continued to calculate it based on the, on having one mill rate. As this process moves along, we'll certainly share information, and we can discuss how that would impact us. I would imagine that it would most likely be when the Board of Finance has the budget, but we will, we'll continue to work on that. We have been told that, and we've gotten initial town-to-town runs of a new state grant that would be provided to purportedly make towns whole. So in theory, it would not negatively impact the rest of our collections because we would make up the difference through a state grant. However, we want to keep a close eye on that and make sure that the, you know, it is truly, it's truly a make-whole number. And I've certainly reached out to our legislators in that regard. So at this point, it's something to watch, but it's not incorporated into the budget. And of course, as you know, the municipal departments will be reviewed by this body and be given to the Board of Finance by March 15th. The Board of Finance then gets it. They will review everything, including the Board of Education, and their budget will be due April 30th, April 20th, excuse me, and the annual budget referendum will be the first Tuesday in May on the 3rd. That is all. I thank you for your time, and on to the rest of your meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. All right. I'm going to pass the consent calendar as presented. There's no objection. Hearing none, I'm passing the consent calendar. I ask that communications items A through O be incorporated into the minutes of our meeting. I'll begin with individuals of the public that are in the gallery this evening. Is there any member of the public that is here in person that would like to participate tonight? All right. No takers in the gallery. Is there anyone online that would like to participate in public participation? Hearing none, I'm going to close public participation. All right, appointments. Item A, Resolution 22-08. Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to ask this council the appointment of Elena Falco, 118 Hillside Lane to the Architectural Review Board, for a term ending December 5th, 2023.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Mauer. Discussion, Ms. Martin.
Elena moved to Monroe with her children two and a half years ago. They were drawn to the small-town feel and the sense of community for their family after living in a myriad of states, including California and New York. Elena has seen towns flourish, some stagnant and some be destroyed. She will be proud to be part of keeping this community's aesthetics and architectural standards to a high level. Between her experience as a realtor, being immersed in a previous nine-year residential home renovation, and her design eye applying to the Architecture Review Board, just makes sense. She's excited to become an active member of the Monroe community, and this appointment fills a vacancy created by the resignation of Deandra Lynn Musso.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any other discussion on this appointment? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Yes, Kevin.
Oh, and Jessica's here.
Aye.
Aye? Oh, did she say aye?
Yeah, she said aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, this passes eight to zero. Ms. Falco, if you would come forward to be sworn in by the First Selectman.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear, or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as a member of the Architectural Review Board to the best of your abilities, so helping God upon penalty of perjury?
I do.
Congratulations. Love the rest of the talk. Can you drop this off me? Don't worry about the rest.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. First Selectman and Ms. Falco. Action items, town council command, finance, education, health, and public safety matters. Madam Vice Chair.
We have not been met since our last meeting.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Town Council Committee and Public Works, Park and Rec... Ugh, Park and Recreation Matters. You see a new number there. Ms. Rooney, is that your number? Please remember that you... Ms. Rooney's not here. There's something named...
I don't believe they've met, Mr. Chairman.
And they have not met. Okay. All right.
We have not met.
Not yet, okay.
Could I just mention something on Park and Rec?
Sure.
Just the, the Park and Rec Commission is starting openings for summer employment. So from park maintainers to making the pool and everything. So if you know someone or you're interested yourself in for the town, you're supposed to contact the Park and Rec Commission, or not the commission, the office, obviously.
Can I be on the lone-woe tractor?
No.
You have to apply. You also can't be on Town Council and work for the Recreation Department, but that's okay. You might everybody else do. You might everybody else do apply. Kevin, LNA.
Yes, we did meet tonight, Mr. Chairman. We went through six items tonight. One is the 2021 State Homeland Security Region, one MOA. We talked about the Wiffle Ball Inc. Domain License Agreement, Connecticut Deep Recreational Trails Grant Personal Service Agreement, an Avenue Enterprise Solutions Sales Order Agreement, MetroCog Professional Services Agreement, and the sale of the 2000 Sutpen Pumper Fire Truck. All reached unanimous consensus, and for those that are in front of us for the agenda tonight, we will talk about them, and for your enjoyment, from LNA.
Thank you, thank you, Kevin. Strategic Planning Committee has not met, however, we will be meeting to discuss capital projects in the next few weeks, prior to March 15th. EMS Building Committee, Mr. Rooney is not here this evening to discuss that. Open Space Preservation Acquisition Committee, Ms. Rorke.
We have not met since our last meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Rorke. First Selectmen's update.
Coming on down. So the first thing is just to give a quick COVID update. Our cases have fallen considerably in the past month, just as they have throughout the state, after averaging over 47 new cases per day at a peak about a month ago. We're now at about eight and a half new cases per day is the average of the report from last week. The, earlier this evening, my understanding is that the Senate did pass the legislation extending a, or I should say, creating a new public health and state emergency for the purposes of federal funding, but will allow the governor's emergency declarations to expire on February 15th. Certain executive orders have been incorporated into new legislation, one of which is that the, the, the new law incorporates the prior order that allowed the State Department of Education and State Department of Public Health to issue, issue and/or lift mask orders in schools. That cannot be done any earlier than February 28th, but they will have that authority through June 30th of 2022. And I'm sure more will be, more will come on that, and as relates to schools, will be a matter for Board of Ed. Economic Development Events, the Monroe, Economic Development Department and the EDC also in collaboration with the Chamber of Commerce and SCORE, is offering a, is offering a six-part series called Build Your Business. It'll be a virtual seminar program. It has been customized for Monroe businesses based upon a townwide survey that they did to all of our Monroe businesses, and they've got a subject matter expert that's going to be delivering each one of those programs. So a good, a nice educational offering for all of our local businesses. There was a question at a prior meeting about the Cedar Grove Picnic area and ability to increase that capacity even more than we did in approving the Parks and Rec's fee schedule. The, the reason, as much as we want to expand that as much as possible, the capacity of that area and the limited parking really don't allow it to go beyond what the Parks and Rec Director recommended, so it is intended for smaller gatherings. So that is the reason why it's, it is, was proposed as it was. The Wolfstand Playground, as you know, from the memorandum of agreement we have with the Monroe Playground Foundation, the demolition of the old kids' creation structure has, is well underway. It's targeted for completion at the end of this month, and the new Wolfstand Playground is scheduled for build May 7th through the 16th, 2022, and I know that group is working very aggressively to get volunteers and make that happen, and we're certainly supporting that every way we can. In regards to our Chief of Police, everyone is hopefully aware that Captain Keith White has been selected by the Board of Police Commissioners to be Monroe's next Chief of Police. Captain White started as a patrol officer. He's a 27-year veteran of the department. He's highly qualified, and he's really well-respected throughout the town. He has incredible connections to our community, institutional knowledge, and loyalty to the department. I am currently working with the town attorney to finalize a proposed employment agreement, which will go to both the Board of Police Commissioners and then here to the Town Council for approval as all agreements come. And last but not least, I've also distributed, along with this update, a preliminary budget meeting schedule after consulting with Chairman Formacella and Chairman Manjos. That, that document, as it continues to get updated, as well as my presentation, will go up on the town website. The proposed budget is already there. It's monroect.org/budget is the quick link to get to it. And with that, that's, that concludes my update. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
First Selectman, I will note for the council one moment. With our budget meeting schedule, we do have kind of a truncated period of time. It may seem like March 15th will, seems far away in the distant future, but it's coming up quick. We have two, two to three fewer days here in February to work on it, and given our, that time period, as well as there were some complications with scheduling dates with other meetings and the Zoom licensing agreements, this schedule will allow us to meet virtually as well as in person in appropriate settings. What I will ask is by Thursday, the 24th, I'll ask if any member of the Town Council to list their departments that they would like to speak with. We'll have two dates, if necessary, to meet with those departments, as we normally do. We will have a regular meeting in between. Also on that Thursday, it'll be joint meeting with the Board of Finance. Typically, Chairman Manjos will kind of steer the, the meeting, kind of give a budget overview. In the process, I think the only member, well, well, Donna Lynn participated as a member of the Board of Finance. I think Jessica's the only person that hasn't had a typical meeting. It's nothing grand, but it's important about setting expectations and going forward with our process. We'll also have the public hearing that, that evening at 7:00. So that meeting will be, begin at 6:30. We'll have our regular Town Council meeting on the 28th. First Budget Workshop will be the second at 6:00. We'll have a Strategic Planning Committee meeting. Everyone is welcome, but the, the three of us on that subcommittee will meet on the 3rd at 6:00. Tues, you know, Tuesday, the 8th, we'll have our second Budget Workshop meeting, if necessary, and on the 14th, we have a regular Town Council meeting, and I anticipate that that is when we will entertain any motions for any changes to the proposed budget, as well as a final budget passing this onto the Board of Finance, okay, which is the 15th is our deadline. Okay. Jason, did you have something?
Yes, Mr. Chair, one question for you and one question for the Selectmen. For that March 3rd meeting, the Strategic Planning Committee meeting.
Yep.
Could you just be sure to provide the call-in for that to the entire council, just so that those of us that do wish to attend remotely have that information?
I think we can do that.
Yeah, I think so. I think in my original discussion with Chairman Formacella, we were likely going to end up doing that in the annex, so we would not have Zoom, but we would certainly have a conference line.
That's just to be able to hear that discussion.
Yeah, I believe there's other, there's other meetings going on, so I think, yeah, but, but we can certainly have a call-in number for council members, certainly.
That would be great. Just, Mr. Selectman, one very quick question on your budget presentation. So as I dive into the whole budget, I understand on page 10, and you're going through the different positions that
Yes.
coming in or going out, and the per diem inspector elimination is $1,507 total for the year?
I'm sorry, you're on page 10.
The presentation, not the
The presentation, not that.
Yes, that was a very, a very small number of, of hours that, so as budgeted, it is, it is not a tremendous amount. We have been, throughout this pandemic though, been seeking to find someone willing to do more than those hours, because we could have supported that through other grants, but it is extremely difficult to find public health workers, particularly public health nurses and public health inspectors, sanitarians, that are available and willing to work part-time. It is an extremely difficult time right now to find that. So we have been trying to avail ourselves of more hours than even what's budgeted through the use of grants, but have not been able to, but
So this would be a significant, but from this to a full-time would be a very significant increase?
Yes, it would.
Of hours for, okay.
Yes, it will be, yes. If for inspections, yes, it would be a whole, yes. I mean, again, you're, you're in theory gaining a half an FTE devoted to inspections, but you're also adding a half of an FTE for administration, which is what we really need in order for those inspections to occur.
I, I don't necessarily have any issue with that. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding the, how big of an increase hourly-wise this really was, and that, that wasn't a typo and missing as
No, that was not a typo, no. The, the budgeted hours for that really were, were really relatively small.
Wonderful.
Yep.
And then just as a very quick note, just, I'm sure the rest of the council agrees, but a great thank you to Chief Salvatore for all of his years of service, and I know I, and I'm, as I get, again, sure the whole council, which is Captain White, soon-to-be Chief White, all the best of luck in filling those shoes and moving on and doing a great job with the town.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mauer. Anything else? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All nay, all those opposed, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes eight to zero. New business, item A, do I ever motion to accept the following donations that individually exceed $1,500? $1,537.23 from the Friends of the Library for EWML.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion by Vice Chair LaPellis, seconded by Mr. Mauer. Discussion, Mr. Kellon?
None other than our continued thanks to this group. They've, you know, they continue to support the library in many ways, and we certainly thank them for these funds to help continue to support the library.
We are always very appreciative of all the work that they do for the town and for our library. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All nay, all those opposed, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes eight to zero. New business, item B, Resolution 2-09, consider an act upon a resolution regarding CT Deep Recreational Trails Grant Personal Service Agreement, Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 22-09, reserve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the Connecticut Recreational Trails Grant Personal Service Agreement and any associated documents binding between State of Connecticut, Department of Energy, and Environmental Protection for the Husatonic River Valley Trail Project.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, there's
Seconded.
Mr. Mauer, there's a motion and a second, passage of Resolution 2209. Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as I'm sure you'll all recall, back in 2009, we, the town entered into an agreement with DEEP for the completion of this trail, the sections two and three of this trail project. This was through the Connecticut Recreational Trails Grant Program. At the time, you know, DEEP had a two-year agreement that was, that expired in November of '21, and the original understanding was that we would be able to request a one-year extension for that, because everyone knew this project would extend beyond that. When we did that, we were informed that they actually had changed some of the standard language in their agreement and wanted a new agreement, so that was sent over with some changes to the contractual language, which, you know, staff and the town attorney went through and had no, no issues with. So what DEEP has done, though, is extended this for two years. Technically not an extension, technically a new agreement, but functionally is an extension. They've also, in the grant, reduced the amount of the award, but the reduction, which was confirmed by staff, is simply a reduction of the amount that has already been expended to date on the project. So this really is just a way to continue the project and continue availing ourselves with a grant to get this project done.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote on the adoption of Resolution 2209. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against, please say nay.
Hearing no nays, this passes eight to two zero. New business, item C, Resolution 22-10, to consider an act upon a resolution regarding Avenue Enterprise Solutions Sales Order Agreement, Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 22-10, resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the Sales Order Agreement and any associated documents binding between Avenue Enterprise Solutions for historic document preservation services for the town clerk.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Donna Lynn Wells. Discussion, Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you. So Avenue is a service or a company that is currently providing documentation, preservation, other services to the town clerk's office. They provide various software and IT prod, services for land records management, you know, film verification and indexing. There are records that have already been digitized and archived back to April of 1966. As you will recall from the last, your last meeting, you had authorized the, a grant from the Connecticut State Library through their program for $5,500. The intention is to use Avenue to now do the work that was contemplated by this, so this was a, a quote or an invoice or agreement, I should say, that was given to us over the summer, but until the grant was received to do the work and had been approved, it was being held by the town clerk pending receipt of that grant. So now that we have it, we can add over 6,000 more documents to the digitized files. The, this Sales Order Agreement is $38 in excess of the grant, but the town clerk will certainly be able to cover that within her existing line items. So with that, the town attorney's reviewed it, and we'd ask that you move this forward.
First Selectman, any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote on the adoption of Resolution 22-10. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes eight to zero. New business, item D, Resolution 2211, to consider an act upon a resolution regarding MetroCog Professional Services Agreement, Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 22-11, resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the Professional Services Agreement and any associated documents binding between Connecticut Metropolitan Council of Governments for GIS data updates for Monroe's utilization of next-gen public safety solutions, software systems.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Donna Lynn Wells. Discussion, Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you. So the police department uses next-gen public safety solutions, as do many law enforcement agencies in the state. They use it for a wide range of, of dispatch and other services. So their computer-aided dispatch, their records management system is all done through next-gen. That system utilizes GIS data to pinpoint locations of incidents and other related things requiring location services. That data layer has not been updated since the next-gen system was implemented by the police department, so it is definitely in need of upgrade. MetroCog, as, as you know, provides us significant GIS work. They have capacity and technical resources to take the new GIS, basically take the current GIS data and convert it to the next-gen format and be able to